Your name stands. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common, and the salute to the state of New Mexico. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the ensemble of perfect friendship among the United cultures. Thank you very much. Just as a reminder, if you have a cellphone on, please turn it off at this time. And the first order of business is going to be the election of a new chairman and a new vice chair. So the floor stands for nominations for chairman. Commissioner, we're gonna nominate yourself as chairman.
I'll second that.
Any further nominations? I think we should go ahead and take the vote, okay? Madam Clerk, would you...
Commissioner Kern? Yes. Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner... Our chair, Commissioner Kern.
Yes. Okay, now I'd like to... The floor now stands for... The floor now stands for nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Trujillo.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, so any further nominations? Then, Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Kern? Yes. Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Congratulations, and we'll have a little time to talk when we get down to the commission and manager's docket, but I look forward to working with this commission. We have a lot of work to do. And I will tell you, there may be times when you feel like I'm pushing you harder than I should be, and you probably will be right, because we are here to serve our constituents, and there's a lot to do in this county, I think, in the coming years. So I think all the employees know how important, I think, employees are, but there will be times when we push you. It's not personal. It is, we're working for our constituents, and as long as we all keep that in mind, I think things will go well. We have a great team here. Really, we have a great team. So I'm proud to serve in this world. Thank you very much. Vice Chair, do you have anything, any comments?
No, I have a little something I can offer.
Yes, so Dr. D N. Madam Commissioner, do you have...
No, sir.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you take your call, please?
Mr. Kern? Yes. Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Next item, approval of the special meeting minutes for December 19, 2022. Typically, if a chairman is not in attendance, a lot of times they will abstain from this vote. But considering we're a new commission, I would like all commissioners to leave the room, and as long as you don't find anything, I would like you to go ahead and vote. So do I have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for December 19, 2022?
Yes, I move the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Kern? Yes. Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Okay. This is a wonderful tradition that this commission has, for those of you that are new. And at this point, we recognize visitors, and what we do is we go around the room, starting at the front, my left, your right, and everybody will state their name. If they represent an organization, what organization that is, so that for the record, we know who is in attendance.
Excuse me, Valdez.
First by... We're gonna start calling you Bobby Junior.
That is correct. Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager, Ray Allen, County Clerk, Lloyd Fernandez, Colfax County.
John F. Duncan, Manager's Office.
Leonard Baca, County Service.
Sarah, Charge Chief Deputy Clerk.
Jordan, we got Buck Valley.
Leah, Wheeler, Buckner Valley.
I'm Paul, raised in Buckner Valley, I can tell.
I'm Deosoto, Ikey, Colfax County.
Lawrence, Trujillo.
We can't back our scam, we don't have a lot of candy, can we?
Or do Virginia Slay, we don't have a lot of intentions, sir.
Virginia Strong, E911, Solid Waste, partier.
Tiana Romero, Solid Waste.
Robert Thompson.
I'm Laura Burke, Colfax County, Republican Party.
Tina Clantillo, Manager's Office.
Tommy Hill, Department of Labor.
Kevin Nolan, City Rantone, County Officer.
Doug Jalen, Fire and Water, Mexico.
Robert Smith, Colfax Gazette.
Hey Carlos, Colfax County, Fire Department.
Clinton Stevens, Rolling Department.
Jim Hartfield, at Fire and Water Department.
Anita Valdez, Business Travel Department, here with the Rantone.
I'm Ray, I'm with the Cimarron Police Department.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all guys for coming. I know that the times that we have commission meetings can often be challenging for the public, because it's during working hours, but I do believe that this is the appropriate time to have a meeting for the county commission, because it does make it more possible for us to interact with our staff, and our staff are the ones that have the knowledge and the data that the commission needs to make decisions. So we appreciate you coming this morning. The next item on the agenda is a public comment. We don't have a clock here, and we don't have in policy a limitation in time, but we do open the floor to any comments about items that are not on the agenda. Again, one of the things that this commission does that happens in no other public body that I've been involved in is we allow the public to speak on specific agenda items. It is a great way to incorporate the public into your decision-making process. I love it. And... But... So if you have something on the agenda you want to talk about, you'll get your chance, but it's gonna be when we call that item on the agenda. This opportunity is for you to tell us something that's not on the agenda. Is there something the commission should be concerned with, know of? Do you have a general complaint, or you want to give somebody accolades at the county? That's what this time is for. We do ask you to keep it short and to the point, but is there anybody from the audience that has any public comments? And when you get to the podium, if you could try to speak into the microphone as much as you can, and again, start off by stating your name and your organization.
Good morning, I'm Virginia Strong. I'm the Solid Waste in E911, partier in the Manager's Office. First off, I want to introduce Tiana Romero. She's our new Solid Waste Tech. She's the person that's gonna go out and clean up around dumpsters and pick up and stuff like that. After I'll let her introduce herself, give herself a brief description, and I'll like to make a comment about Solid Waste and E911.
My name is Tiana Romero. I've been with Solid Waste since December 19. I just wanted to introduce myself. If you guys have any questions, concerns, please get with me, and I'll make you care of it.
So a couple updates. I'd like to start with trash first. As of right now, Colfax County is having a solid waste crisis right now. There's a few things going on. Number one, Tri-State was bought out by new owners, so they are learning the new route, the new different things like that that they need to learn as far as the new business goes. Number two, their... Our normal driver from Tri-State did quit in December, so we have a substitute driver as of right now that does not know Colfax County. They're from Texas, they drive four hours every day just to come do our routes. They are learning. Tiana has shared every dumpster point with them, so that can help them learn where they need to go, where they need to pick up. There's some obstacles for them. One, of course, like I just said, they don't know the route. Two, they're unexperienced drivers, they are not from New Mexico. They're new to driving a big trash truck. And then, three, sometimes there's bad weather. The only time we've had bad weather is right now with Angel Fire. Everywhere else has been very clear. But please be patient with Tri-State, they're trying their best. I've been in contact with the new owner, his name is Ricardo, and it seems like ever since I've been in contact with him, we've gotten a little bit more given to us than we were in the first few weeks when we were only talking to employees. I know that I've gotten a lot of complaints in the Angel Fire area and a lot of complaints in the Maxwell area. So there's the two major problem areas right now. We did have some complaints in Rantone, but the major areas is Maxwell and Angel Fire. I just want to assure you guys that we are working with Tri-State to try to get them all taken care of. I did have confirmation late last night from Ricardo that Maxwell outskirts will be picked up today. I did send him a pin for every single dumpster in that location. There's two locations in Angel Fire that he still has not picked up. I'm waiting for confirmation as to when, but the Memorial and Saddleback Trail. Those two locations have absolutely not been picked up, and I'm waiting for confirmation as to when those will be picked up. Do you have any questions before I move on to E911?
No, I will state that I, as a representative from District Three in Reno Valley, and I know that Commissioner Kern has also had quite a bit of public contact, let's call it, on the solid waste issue. It is a crisis. And... But I've had numerous contacts. And I will say, it's, you know, I don't... It's hard to pat somebody on the back when something is as bad as this is. But I do want to pat Virginia on the back. She has addressed the situation head-on. She's taken direct contact from people that, in some cases, are not pleasant. Rightly so, to be honest. And she has always been very professional and had direct response. She's taken responsibility where it was due, and she's been extremely empathetic to our constituents. And Virginia, I just want to thank you. I know you're relatively new as well, and this is probably your first really big challenge. Hopefully it'll be your last, I kind of doubt it. But it is an issue, and it's an ongoing issue, and we thank you for your persistence, coming in on the weekend to work on this issue, or at least dealing with the emails on the weekend, I hope you can, you know. But I personally appreciate that, and I wanted to thank you for your actions in this case.
Thank you. Just because you said that, I just want to, you know, Tiana's worked really hard as well. She... I mean, there's only so much she can do this hard to put a fabric over, but she does get it to every dumpster throughout the week. It might only be once, but some of them twice, and she does pick up around them as best she can. But by the time she picks her one dumpster to the next one, she's in Rantone, she's in Angel Fire, that will be a mess by the time she gets back. So just know that she is trying, and we are keeping documents. We started a solid waste binder that has copies of every single complaint that gets called in. Also, every time she goes out to a site, that is mentioned, we'll take a before picture and an after picture, so we can show that our system's done.
So thank you. I wouldn't worry about all that, but thank you, Jen, it's awesome.
And if any of you guys ever want to see the logs, they will be in her office. If she's not there, because she's all constantly out, I can go and probably do that for you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes. So with them driving, is there maybe a way we could talk with Rico to see if they can stay the night here in Colfax County for at least a week to cut down on driving hours and maybe help with picking up the garbage? We're trying to pick up.
I could definitely ask about that. The thing the commission has admitted is that they are trying to fire a driver that's vocal. I know they had an interview with a gentleman who was in the room. He is... I don't know his name or anything, but he gets nervous in the room. So if you're cross, they can get someone vocal, because that's what we want, if someone does disappear that keeps a truck at their home. But I could definitely ask him that.
Yeah, just to read at least a comment to agree.
That's a great idea, Commissioner Trujillo. As a matter of fact, we have some constituents that own rental properties that have complained to me about the situation, and we asked them, my guess is that they would pitch in and help us in that scenario if we needed somewhere to keep them. So that's a very good idea. Okay, thank you very much.
I just want to touch base on E911, how was I getting involved? I know the last time I came in to talk about E911, I let you guys know that there was over 2,000 errors on the system as far as the accuracy of the code. I am working with Tyler and another gentleman named Tendy, and we have got the... We have got a lot of the errors down. I also just saw old tablet that I have new licenses for the pro version of the software, and so we are really trying to use that software and working with them to continue to get those errors down.
So do you have... Do you have an ETA of getting all of those resolved?
To be honest with you, I wish I would have already had it done, but since it's a committee for account scale and then procurement, I haven't worked on it as much as I'm sure. But I'm hoping you can have it done. I would need at least six months, if not, I would like it a lot sooner than that. But for sure, once I just always can go to E911 and Solid Waste and procurement, I'll have a lot of fun with it.
Do we have other public comment? Mr. Tan?
Yes, sir. I'm pretty loud, but don't care what's there.
I'm glad you said that.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to go with all the new commissioners. I hope that you three have an extremely productive time. In a way, you're kind of a new commissioner too, starting through COVID and not dealing correctly with the people for a long period of time. I will have some stuff coming before you. I've already met the Sheriff of Baca, and we're working on presentation on law enforcement for U Park. Also, we are discussing, we believe, that the pet ordinance is out of date. And law enforcement, even though they can't pick up animals due to pet fender and having a reaction hauling a prisoner, they need to be able to assign penalties and stop a bunch of it. I'll go into more specifics later, because I have got emails to y'all and everything, but I started with Sheriff Baca, is that directly affects him and his office. Don't believe me, you may learn to hate us, but thank you for dumping our trash. I called your road manager, and he passed it along, and they didn't dump our trash the next day. And so it looked kind of messy, but we appreciate the thunder out of it, because every dumpster, skid, everything was packed in the till. And I can see where you're gonna have a lump. That's it, thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Tan. Anyone else with public comment? Emergency Manager Viall.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, Commissioner, Tom Hill, and the General. So a bit of timely information. Last night, it ended along with, and Commissioner, we're here. A meeting regarding the Cap Canyon Relief Act. So what that is, is it's about $2.25 billion coming into New Mexico to provide support for those who suffered loss as a result to the Landmark Street Cap Canyon fire. This one's pretty interesting, the way it's being enacted. There's very little state support on this one, so it's pretty much a FEMA ship. And FEMA's started building a house where they have blueprints. So it's going pretty interesting at this point. Part of these public meetings they're having is they're basically lighting that blueprint on the fly. So there's been a lot of proposals, a lot of changes. Some of the highlights of the ability for what is allowed and what isn't allowed. Basically, there's relief funds for people who suffer an actual physical loss, so something that's not already previously covered by suppression of care through Forest Service or that first round, you know, they've came through FEMA. So looking at some of those structural values that were lost, as well as, you know, associated business and that sort of thing. They're also looking at agricultural production loss, including tree loss. We've been suffering a tree loss in Colfax County. However, more standard of the parts of Towns County suffered significant tree loss. One of the issues brought up during that was nationwide, traditional agricultural product losses restricted at 25% return on that agricultural product. Through some of these earlier public meetings, it was brought up, and it shows that this FEMA team's exercising is they're appealing back to DC to try and get away with that 25% loss on the trees. So kind of waiting the word on what that's going to look like. Along with that, we've been able to successfully lobby them to open that up to business loss, including business loss income of anything associated with the fire. So evacuations, closures, even possibly the closure of state parks and the associated revenue loss along with that. There's some other hurdles to overcome with that, but at this point, since it is, it's very general, and it's very loose, we're basically recommending to anyone who might have suffered a loss is, you know, throw against the wall and see what sticks, sort of mentality. So anyone can file a claim right now, and you don't need any information. You don't need any real solid information to start filing that claim. That information comes up later. Another one of the things that's been brought up in multiple meetings is, right now, under their plans and policies, basically, all the groundwork for applying for that is on the responsibility of the individual or the corporation, municipal and county. Also, they have one on municipal program. So... And that's one of the things that's been brought up to appeal, is basically, if I'm an individual and I suffer loss, I need to come up with the claim that can set loss, including the appraisal of the damage done, and I'm on the hook for the cost of that appraisal. Unless FEMA back and has to request an appraisal, then they'll pay for it. But that upfront cost is being absorbed by the first client for that, which could be significant. If we're talking about the loss of 10,000 trees on a property, there's a lot of money associated with the valuation of those 10,000 trees. And to me, it sounds right now like a system of either death by paperwork, bleeding from the paper cuts, or just giving up as a result of not paying the dealer from your office. You know, you're filing a claim on a return of $5,000 worth of a product where it's going to cost you $2,000 cash to get there, isn't really worth it. It was worth a trade-off, we're talking about doing this for two years. So that's another one of the things that are brought up to appeal. So the last day for public comment regarding the current 45-page document is this Friday. That's still open, there's online comments available through the website, so we're encouraging the people to certainly take a look at that. And in the meantime, also encouraging folks to go ahead and apply. Most of the county expenses as related to Cap Canyon, we've already applied for recovery for the first round of FEMA, and that was cost associated with law enforcement, myself, Fire Marshal. But looking at this new program, it is possible we could talk about some expansion of our recovery funds. The one thing we came to mind last time while trying to handle it is the airport. So the airport did actually get paid for the use of the facility in fuel usage. However, the airport lost normal revenue as a result of the closure of the airport. So something we could look at is applying for recovery of the lost revenue, some of the parking fees, the fuel fees that we normally would have seen during, you know, the height of the tourism season, that we didn't see this last summer. So that's one thing the county needs to consider. Also, we have talks with some of the municipal about some additional funds, perhaps they could look into getting this as well. But like I said, it's an interesting system, we'll just tend to see how it goes. I'm cautiously optimistic at this point, but again, no teller. So the key update on a few other things related to fires last summer. With the residency watershed program that we applied for within our CBS, that was about $930,000 for watershed recovery, mostly some settlement catchments, investigation. The majority of that was either in beyond state land or on U Bar. Through the various negotiations, we'll get into all the details, but right now, it looks like everyone wants us to actually submit a bid on this project. Of course, now we're already looking at a deadline of March. So I'm applying this week for an extension. We'll be requesting a total of an 18-month extension, that's 18 months for the supplier itself. So we'll be extending this to October for completion of this supplier. So as soon as we get all this further laid, we can get a bid out, then hopefully we can get a project underway. But if we get the extension, the timing works out anyway, that's the summer, that's when we'll be the best ones to get to, and they'll be committed to that. We're also still trying to work with state land office on the air portion of the recovery of this, but things are, again, a little testable with the state right now. And then we're still waiting word on some of those recovery funds, like I mentioned, the first round of FEMA coming into the sheriff's office. It's one of the things, yes. A couple of weeks to buy, and they say, well, we need this one last piece of information, that'd be it. And then a couple of weeks to buy, and we can hear that he texts in. So it's a little frustrating at this point, not any kind of, oh, this is the last thing. But the last effort was right around Thanksgiving, so hopefully that kind of, they can manage to work on. And with that, any questions?
Any questions from the commission?
No.
Big problem? Yeah, Tom, we want to thank you for your diligence on this. I know you've been working hard on it. I do have a couple of things, not really questions, but... On the FEMA recovery funds, the amount, $3.2 billion, I think, because it was $2.5 before, and we got it in the... We got it due to $1.4, I think, in the last bill, the omnibus bill that came out. I think we got more than that.
Yeah, so if you combine those, it does total out to that. But I think part of that omnibus is covering actual expenses. Since the state has shown minimal involvement, the team is really ramping up. They're talking about probably 200-plus fewer orders being hired. So if you look at 200 GS8s, GS12s, all that will work in the state for the next two years, that's probably going to cover the bulk of all that. The bureaucracy itself is gigantic, and it's going to absorb at least half of this funding that will be in the state.
So Emergency Manager Viall and I were at this FEMA meeting last night, and there was more FEMA employees there than our citizens. So that's a true comment. But I think the important thing to know is that if you're... If you own a business, this is more than just if the fire burned down a property or burned down structures. If you own a business that was negatively impacted by the fires, for example, Todd, if it's okay, I'd like to use your business as an example. There in U Park, you know, he owns a fly fishing shop and a convenience store, and during those months, they were basically shut down because the state parks were shut down, which is where his clients go. So it had huge impact, even though he may have been miles away from the actual fire, it had huge impact on his business. And so if you have a business that was impacted, even though it wasn't, if you're in Cimarron or Springer, I saw the mayor just walk in. If you have businesses in Springer that were affected because people weren't coming in to Colfax County because of the fire, and your business has suffered because of that, they can apply for reimbursement of those. I'm not saying it's going to be easy, federal government never is, but it is something we need to get the word out, because the deadline for filing is November 14, I think.
Yeah, so November 23, you're going to be there.
Okay. And we just need to get that word out to people that anybody in Colfax, any business in Colfax County that had a negative impact from a fire is eligible for reimbursement. You don't have to be in Angel Fire to qualify for that. It could be anywhere in Colfax County. That's great. Thank you, Commander Viall. Anybody else have public comment? Mr. Mayor, did you have anything to say? Anybody else have public comment? Mr. Mayor, did you have anything to say?
Did you see it from back here or was it?
No, if you could up here, I think we'll hear you better.
Chairman, Commissioner, for those of you that don't know, my name is Olopes. I'm an American with Taylor Springer. And my concern today is the policing concern. So three of my officers have applied to come to the sheriff's office. One of them that I just completed through the academy six weeks ago. And so I can't compete with the retention bonus and those things. So when I went to the inauguration for the governor, I was asking her, how do municipalities try to get the funding that the county did get? And she was telling me that she was going to look into it to see that the counties could give grants to the municipalities to do retention through the whatever it is, I don't know, the Ackerman or ARPA, yeah, money to give to our local departments. Because I don't think that it solves the problem. If I lose all three of my officers that I find me was able to get free, then I lose them all to the county. Well, it didn't solve the problem. So then I'm not bugging them to help do coverage for my municipality because I have zero on that. My thing is, is I just wish we could work on something before those things come out. So we're not always behind the eight ball. I didn't know there was going to be a $10,000 signing bonus. I didn't know there was going to be, you know, three, four, five thousand, whatever the retention dollars are going to be. But, but it is hard when I just go last year and change my whole ICIP thing to finally get new units for, for my officers. I originally was funded three officers, but it was at $15 and $13 and $12 an hour. So I cut a position so I could have two officers and use those monies between them two to keep it competitive. Then I still go and seek funding to get the third officer funded. I finally do that and then, and then like I say, he graduates mid-November and he's already applying to leave. And so for one, what a kick in the face for our community that we're a small town. And I mean, it took a lot of money to put together to buy uniforms, buy the units, buy, pay for the travel back and forth for all the weeks for the academy. And then I lose them. So I'm just asking that if the sheriff's office and the commission will work with the municipalities to see what we could do to help keep, keep our officers where they're at and be competitive across the board. It's just a policing concern to me because it doesn't solve my problem if I lose all three of them at one time. But I'm willing to work with whatever I need to do. The other thing is changing gears for the animal shelter. I went ahead and did get the electric hook from Bolisong Electric. So it would be right under $6,000 to get the electric done. So the Towns Binger kind of go ahead and do that to pay for the electric. We have worked with Sea of Gas as far as to get the gas line ran to the building itself. And then what I'm hoping we can do is, well, I'm waiting on legal to get back on the changes that we've had back and forth with the contract as far as for the building to be used, you know, by, by the county. The town council was not in favor of donating the building and the land to the county just in the off chance that this doesn't fly or it comes off the ground and then dies, then, then we have the county owning the building that we could, you know, repurpose for something different. But what I envision for the $100,000 that the county has budgeted is hopefully we could put a safety system in and then the HVAC, the heating and the cooling for this year, and then we can reassess what we need to do for cement work and as far as getting heads and that kind of stuff. But I still have the vehicle down there stored. We do drive it, you know, once every three, four, five months, not much, but just to keep the batteries up and the fluid or whatever. And I still have the $2,000 donation from the lady that donated the vehicle. So we can get the, whatever we want to put as far as the barrier from the front seat, from the driver to where the animals or if it's going to be cages or whatever, add some, some sort of labeling on the doors. I just didn't know what we were going to actually call it. So I had an order, but just so you guys know for a minute. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you go, I think Manager Bo would like to have a comment.
Sure. Mayor, thanks for coming. And just so you know, I've already had a discussion with my staff and I think Chief Garcia, your in Raton, Captain Valdez, and City Manager in reference to exactly what you're talking about. And I've worked with Jonah and we do think that the county has ARPA funding up through 2025. And I know the sheriff's been very, very successful in getting grants and stuff like that for hiring bonuses and things like that. But I think, I know the sheriff right now, I just talked to him yesterday, he is looking at developing a new recruiting source to actually expand boundaries so that kind of what you described doesn't occur. So what going like this with officers, so we're aware of that. But we are going to be working with Taylor Raton. I mentioned this to the mayor during the meeting and so on, and with you. And I think Jonah and I will be working to see if we can utilize some of that ARPA funding that the county has. And I'm very sure we can do this. I'll have to go to the county attorney to make sure. And in effort to maybe assist you with hiring bonuses and things like that that are comparable to what the sheriff's doing. So we're aware of it. I think that we need to work as a community, as a bigger community, kind of see ourselves as Colfax County and kind of work together, collaborate, coordinate in order to progress what I consider to be a very important issue, law enforcement. So we're there with you.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I don't want to, in no way to be like something negative towards the sheriff's government. My deal is to high five to them for seeking the funding and getting the grants. It's just if we can work from here forward to try to help get that idea. Meet with City Manager Scott Barry and Mayor Sodano. I did call Mayor Gonzalez from Cimarron and everyone had the same kind of idea of what we can do to work alongside them to try to mirror something to where hopefully we can get where we're competitive and in the municipalities, just like they are with the sheriff's department to where it's not something that would entice these officers to be bouncing that report between agencies where we could keep them. And I think the stronger that the departments are within the municipalities, it's a benefit to, to the sheriff's department because they can work on that line areas and not have to focus on municipal areas. And we did have the conversation in the past with about, you know, giving our ALA funds to the sheriffs and letting them take over our, our department. The only thing was that my council had a concern with was that, so we have three jobs funded through our ALA PF funds right now. If we give those up, and currently it's fine, I mean, the commission's great, the sheriff's fine. But my deal is, is that if we give those up and 10 years from now, this dynamics changes and, you know, we give a sheriff that really doesn't, you know, see Springer as important or whatever community it may be. Well, then we're in a different situation. And once I give those up, I won't get them back, is what they were telling me when I called down to Santa Fe. So that's why I'm trying to hold on to keeping a department alive, which is tough in a small town. So anyway, I just, it's nothing against the department. I just want to see what we can do to keep the communication open and work together from the county and the municipalities to have a police staff that's full for them and for us.
We are working on it and we will be reaching out to you and everyone else in the very near future so we can get a set out and start processing this.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, since this wasn't on the agenda, the commission can't really have a conversation about it. I mean, I've been asking you questions. What I would like to do is to direct Mr. Manager to formulate a meeting or, I don't know, a quasi committee to meet with the other elected officials and Sheriff Baca and see if we can come up with a solution to this that hopefully sometime in February could be presented to the commission. Is that fair?
No, I think not. And anywhere that I can help with putting this meeting together, even if we have to post it, I'm willing to do that. Whatever it is, I want to work with the whole situation, but I'm not trying to make more work for someone else. I just, it is just a concern. I just brought to a meeting two weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else have public comment?
One thing related to that, I have to bring in Mr. Chairman. And I know it was probably to the mission, but in your hearts, you know, we did that. Different businesses as well, kind of just the forces that are outside of it.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So we should do that as well. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, moving on to item nine, discussion or action or anti-action on approving expenditures. Commissioners, did you all have any questions or comments on the expenditures?
I haven't.
I have none. And I have none. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the expenditures. I'll second. No, I don't. I need a motion, sorry. Oh, well, I made one too. You can say so moved.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Hand a second. Madam Clerk, do you take it?
Commissioner Kern, yes, Commissioner Trillo.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Okay, next, presentation by Paul Breach. Did I say that right? I'm surprised. Junior Baca, Paul Breach Jr., Baca Valley Telephone Company and Sierra Communications. Sir, the audio is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the commission. My name is Paul Breach. I work for Baca Valley Telephone and Sierra Communications. We're the internet provider, fiber optic installation company for Union Colfax County. We work for this commission and members in the courthouse for years and years. I took the opportunity to be county manager for several months ago to introduce myself and our company. I think it's important. We have a good relationship with this company, with this county. We've been in existence since 1974 and I've been there since then and that kind of explains the color of the beard. But I think it's important we work with the county. Road Department is a very big partner of us, of ours, as well as the departments within the commission, the county building, I guess, the courthouse. I thought it's important to introduce ourselves, let you know what our plans are. Big push in the last few years from the feds and the state pushing on companies such as ourselves is fiber, fiber, fiber. And I get that, especially during COVID, it was important that kids had communications. And a lot of in this county, Union County did not. So we're doing our best at what we can do. We're the smallest of the little phone companies in New Mexico. It's got 15 phone homes. We're the tiniest and we like to think that we're one of the most aggressive and we try and give services in the best we can. So it took the time to meet the county manager, I want you to know who we are and what we do and let you know kind of something about what our plans are this year and, you know, following years. So when citizens or constituents ask you, hey, how can we get fiber here? What's going on? I want you to know what our company's doing. We're not to blame in Colfax County that's putting in Carson Electric and very aggressive with some of their fiber optic installations. And as are we and we're kind of the two that are doing it. I think Century Label is trying to do some as well. We have several funding sources that we can apply to, as can all the other companies in the state, in New Mexico. USDA has a program, PRC and Santa Fe has a program, there's other state programs. Fiber optic cable that we started many years ago, we built a fire in Maxwell School quite a few years ago and it was about $20,000 a mile, but fiber optic cable, now it's about $60,000 a mile. And the cost is labor and it's the cost of the material. Right now, it's hard to get fiber optic cable. We're 10, 12, 14 months when we order to get it. Then you have to have electronics to make it all work. So we appreciate all the customers and everyone that has understood that fact. COVID didn't help anything, didn't help any of us. So now we're still got manufacturing labor issues, the same as everybody. So we have applied for several years to PRC, which is the Public Regulation Commission, who regulates us in New Mexico. And we were able to get quite a few projects. We got one finished thanks to the road department, first we helped get on Highway 193 north of Harley. We got a piece of fiber in Sofia, New Mexico, and that was a big, big deal for us. We finished another project, Turf Drive, which is a little development just west of the hospital. We got that one finished. We're excited that we got approved for another project from Maxwell to Cimarron. We plan on starting that, letting it unfold this year. We can get the material like that. A few Cimarron school, Cimarron city offices, as well as Billings, Galbraith, better internet, cheaper internet. That's the goal. So we're excited. We got that one funded. And we have several other, and we have Tonne, Tete, and Road, as you know, as a road just east of Raton. We applied for that to give some fiber to feed a wireless internet site we have on the east side of Raton. And that was approved, as well as one at the golf course. People run the golf course in Raton, they have cell phones because of where they live and kind of the ridge and, you know. So now we're going to have fiber optic cable. These programs are good. There's no installation costs to the consumers if they agree to put the service in now. And we also have a gigantic project in Raton that really belongs to the county, but it's Raton and that's part of the county. And that's a project that's going to be everything from Tiger Drive to the north end of town and west of the third street. Every one of those households in there, which is about 900 of them, are included in this project. So we're excited about that. And again, I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know what we're doing and how we're trying to, as a small company, trying to get a fiber optic out there. I think it's important. It's important. You know, it's how Cimarron, we're trying to do more in Cimarron. It's just so, they're expensive to get this stuff in. If we cannot charge or we don't charge the installation cost, we charge everything else and we'll do the math. We have to have some state federal help letters. Once we get more applications in this year, we're going to do one with three USDA as well as PRC. And I'll talk to the manager again about getting some letters and support they need help because in the state, the state, the county is buying as well. So again, we have a busy agenda. I don't want to take much time. The other thing I wanted to mention is we are installing a phone system in all the county buildings in October, November. We had three systems that came in all at the same time. We finished one of the smaller ones. The system for the county is 150 phones. Working with Almedeo, thank him for his help. We'll have texts that'll be going through the courthouse in the next six weeks. All of these phones have to be pre-provisioned. So we provision them in the morning, bring them in here, plug them in and, and get the mugs out. So we all have to be done at first. We have one other system that's ahead of you when we did these three and set them up. This was the biggest system and so we have one other that we're working on having finished in the store. The system is a big, big system and we just want to make sure that we do it right. And you know, it all comes in and we don't need it. So our tax pool needs, as I said, go through the courthouse and we talked on the table about that. How each of the phones have to be pre-provisioned, each of them. That's 150 units have to be programmed and provisioned before we can load them in. So as I said, we work with the clerk's office and all the offices to make sure they're set up the way you want them. But again, I forgot about it. It's, you know, COVID and the rest of the year, to be honest, to the employees. So we were ramped up again and across our fingers that Scott and Almedeo as well, the mayor of the end. Get all your department set up. Phones are the way you want. It doesn't make sense to come in and set a phone at the clerk's desk and say, okay, what do you want us to do? And we're going to be an hour and a half programming and achieving. So we want to do that ahead of time, speed the system up so that she's not down and had. and has to sit there, you know, with the tools out to maybe cross the program. So the system's been very good so far, we have one in our office as well. So, again, if there's any questions, the manager, of course, has my contact information, ask those commissioners, we're happy to help. Thank you again for the cooperation, the county, helps us with the county's union and help us with all the county as well. So, thank you, and I can ask any questions if you have.
Commissioner Trejo.
Is that a comment?
Mr. Manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Breech, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Inside comment. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, there is a comment.
This is Breech. I just want to thank you for everything you do do. I mean, it's been very helpful, I know I'm a customer of yours, and I reuse your internet for work and at home and everything else, so I appreciate everything you do in this center, and if you ever don't, I'll miss you.
Just the letters of support will be very helpful. You've got a wireless system in Raton, we have another one in Cimarron, it's a kitty. Wireless is a crazy technology, it doesn't light trees in the leaves. And in the winter, these systems work great, in the summer, the trees wake up, we have issues with Cimarron, Raton, and it is a big deal. So we're trying to connect to Mr. Fernandez's son, who's a fantastic employee, he's really good, and does a good job, we're lucky to have him. So, are we doing the wireless system, we're trying to get it replaced with fiber, fiber is what we need, and it's just, it just takes time, and this is kind of our answer. Thank you.
Commissioner Trejo. Thank you very much. Sorry, Mr. Senator.
Your honor.
Okay, item number 11, discussion and action on resolution 2023-01, Open Meetings Act. So this is something we do annually, where we accept and recognize the Opens Meeting, Opens Meetings Act, that is established by the state of New Mexico, that guides or regulates how we hold meetings with the public and the interaction between the commissioners. Commissioners, are there any questions? I know you, I know Mary Lou knows, is that the Act inside and out?
I read it.
You read it? And, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2023-01, Open Meetings Act. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please take role?
Commissioner Kern? Yes, Commissioner Trejo.
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes. Item 12, Resolution to Adopt State Procurement Code. It's both good and bad, the state procurement code, unfortunately, it does protect our citizens, which I'm very appreciative of, it also does make it very hard for us to execute the government. That's my personal opinion, in any case, but, and regardless of that, it is something that we are required by statute to follow, and so I want to, the floor is open to a motion to adopt the resolution 2023-02, to adopt the state procurement code.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution 2023-02, open to the public.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern? Yes, Commissioner Trejo.
Yes. Yes. Item 13, Discussion and Action on Resolution 2023-03, Set the Liquor License Fee for 2023. Commissioners, is there any discussion, any questions?
There's really not much to discuss. We just issued three, is all we have in Colfax County.
Oh, we only have three liquor licenses?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution 2023-03, liquor, set liquor license fees.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2023-03, to set the liquor license fee for 2023, which by the way, it's $50, spend that for a while.
Ever.
Ever. We're at the maximum, we're at the maximum. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern? Yes, Commissioner Trejo.
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes. Discussion, action on appointment to NERCO, both a voting member and an alternate member. So, NERCO, for those of you that don't know, NERCO is the Northeastern Transportation Planning Organization, and it is Region Four, right?
Yes.
District Four. And the county participates in that, and basically, that organization, their primary goal is to determine how expenditures from both the state and federal level that flow to District Four will be expended on roads and bridges, et cetera. It's a very important aspect, we get money from this, and so it's a very important role, and I will now take nominations for a voting member.
Who are the current representatives?
So currently, Robert was the voting member, he was a previous road foreman, and I was the alternate. Madam Commissioner, my recommendation, I was waiting for him before, again, my recommendation, but my recommendation is, as serving as a voting member, I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of technical knowledge that's required to know, to interact with NERCO in regards to bridges and roads. Initially, I thought it was important for an elected official to be the voting member, and so I pushed to become that voting member. I quickly found out that basically I was asking Robert, which should I vote for, because I'm not a roads person, and there are a lot of technical issues. Because of that, I recommend that we have people who are involved in Colfax County directly with the roads. It wouldn't hurt to have an alternate as a commissioner, and if that's the case, I would like to defer that to one of my two fellow commissioners. But my recommendation for the voting member to be the superintendent of Roads Department. That's just my opinion, you all can do whatever you want. So I'm standing for nominations for the voting member.
I'd like your Commissioner Kern's opinion or discussion.
I would concur in having to deal with it, one of us is a manager position, I would concur with my recommendation, Commissioner Trejo, so I would like to nominate Glenn for the voting member.
We'll do the alternate thing, sorry. I mean, you can discuss it, but as far as motions.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, you want to second that motion?
Yes, I second.
Okay, we have a motion for Glenn, are you officially the new superintendent, Glenn?
Yep.
Okay, I wasn't sure, a new, Robert just retired a few weeks ago, so. So super, we're glad to be the voting member. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern? Yes, Commissioner Trejo.
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes, and so now I'll take nominations for an alternate.
I move to nominate Commissioner Kern.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood? Chairman Wood, sorry.
Yes.
And Commissioner Trejo.
Yes. Okay, congratulations, you guys served us well. By the way, if you want to have a good meeting, get Monty involved, because he knows how to get good food. We had a great meeting at the Armory, the old Armory. Okay, item 15, Discussion, Action Appointing Voting Member and Alternate to the New Mexico County's Insurance Authority Pool. Commissioners, do you all have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend Commissioner Trejo, this has background knowledge in insurance, so I would make this a point of motion.
I'll second that nomination. Any further discussion?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes.
Man, this is just like, I better fill my papers and order, yeah. Well, he's supposed to sit over here.
I'm making sure I'm saying the right words. Okay, so now I'll take nominations for an alternate. Keep in mind that the alternate does not need to be an elected official.
I would nominate manager board.
They have a nomination for manager board, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second for a manager board to be the alternate for the, excuse me, New Mexico County's Insurance Authority Pool. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes. Item 16, Discussion, Action on Appointment of North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board of Directors, again, a director and an alternate. Commissioners, do you all have any comments?
Are you still the current representative?
I would like to say that I'm very interested in staying on the board of directors, and I think we have made a lot of progress in the last year, two years almost, that I was on that board. We have several things that are getting ready to hit, as a matter of fact, I have a meeting on January 13th in relation to housing, that's going to affect the entire county, and also some actions that are in relation to fire and things of that nature. So I would, I would be more than willing to remain as the, as the voting member of the board.
Having served on those boards when you're here before, it's a very active board, and they have the opportunity to learn very good things, so I think it's important to continue that continuity, so having said that, I would like to nominate Commissioner Trejo.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second for the nomination of Chairman Wood for the North Central Economic Development District Board of Director. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes, and now I'll take nominations for an alternate.
I would like to do it. I'd like to do it, and I'd nominate myself.
Okay, we have a nomination of Commissioner Trejo, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes, I will tell you that there will be, there is one other position on this board from our county, and that is a person representing economic development. Generally, it is not somebody from the county, it's somebody involved in like a container commerce, or an economic development organization, and that nomination is not required to come before the commission, but it will be voted on by the New Mexico County Board of Directors in their meeting on January 26th. So if, I personally contacted the people at Grover Tone to see if they were interested in placing a person in that position, but if you have other people that you think would represent Colfax County as an economic developer in the North Central Economic Development District Board of Directors, I think, contact me and I can tell you how to place that nomination. Okay, next is appointment of a workers' compensation voting member and alternate for the workers' compensation board. Commissioners, do you all have any?
Who are the current members, sir?
Mr. Manager? Sure, I could do that. Roy, did you know who's the?
I never participated in this.
I was, I was ever, but I never vote for having members.
I'd be willing to do it, since it involves the insurance as well.
So we have a nomination for Commissioner Trejo for the appointment of a workers' compensation voting member. Do we have any further discussion? Nominations?
I'll second this.
Thank you.
Oh, we needed a second, sorry, I missed that, thank you.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes, and next, an alternate for the workers' compensation board. Commissioners, or commissioners, do we, Ms. Kern, do you have interest in it, since you've already had some experience?
I'll, I mean, I'll do it, that's the issue.
Yeah, I move to appoint Mrs. Kern.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion, any further discussion? And I, madam clerk?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
All right, yes. Next, discussion appointment of Northeast Economic Development Organization, both a board member and an alternate. Now, Northeast, so Colfax County is actually fortunate, I think, that we're one of the few counties in the state of New Mexico that belongs to two economic development districts. We belong to North Central and we belong to Northeast. So I think there are differences, the Northeast, NITO is actually just a board, nonprofit organization basically, that promotes economic development, whereas North Central is actually a council of governments and does things beyond economic development in the, in our area, seven state area. So this is primarily economic development, I will tell you, I've sat on that committee for two years. I'll be honest, I would prefer to see another one of my fellow commissioners on that board, simply because, you know, I am becoming overwhelmed with everything I'm on, and I would rather not be on a board than be on a board and do, and have a good job. So I will do it, if that's what my fellow commissioners want, I would prefer that.
I would nominate Commissioner Trejo.
I'll second that nomination. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes. And now for an alternate.
I would nominate Commissioner Wood.
We have a nomination.
I'll second that.
And we have a second, any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman Wood.
Yes. Okay, discussion appointment to the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments, and there, and this is a member. By the way, we actually have two members to this organization, this is a council of governments, it's Taos County, the city of Taos, Moritz County, Colfax County, the city of Eagleness, the city of Angel Fire, the city of Red River, I think Questa also is in that?
Yes.
So the manager by default, by position, is a member of this committee, but generally, there is an elected official, and municipalities that have the mayor, by default, it is the mayor. But since we are a commission, we vote on our representative. Historically, it has been someone from my district, but I think there's reasons for it to be someone from Raton, at least for the next year, and that is one of the large initiatives of this council of governments, is to develop the film industry. And they're actually talking about starting and funding, trying to fund a whole film organization in Taos County. I approached them and said, why are you going to reinvent the wheel? We already have one formulated in Raton. And so, and these from the arts, video or film arts here in Raton, has done a presentation to the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments, and that is their major initiative right now. And so because of that, I almost think that it makes sense to have somebody from Raton in that position. Keep in mind that, I think, you know, in general, it's Keep in mind that I think, you know, in general, it's the similarities, the mountain, whatever it is, the similarities between Marina Valley and Taos County and Mora is supposedly the impetus for us being a member of this organization. But there's no requirement for it to be from District Three. I'll do it again. I was just in for a year. I think we went a year without, almost a whole year without a representative. And then I'll be happy to do it again. But I think since the primary initiative this year is the film industry and I'm trying to get the whole three-county area to take advantage of Rattone's film industry that's already underdeveloped, got a building, the city's given these guys a building already and so on. And we've got support from the commission and the city of Rattone on this. I just think it makes more sense to have someone from Rattone representing.
So with that, I would, I would think of it being in our district. I am from Rattone. I'd be more than happy to do this too. But this also resides in Commissioner Kern's district with building in particular and the city. This is the current, so it falls within District Two. I don't know if you have an interest in doing this or just?
I think either one of you would represent Colfax County, at least, so.
I mean, you would like to, Commissioner Trujillo?
I can. I'm here locally. I don't have to travel, so.
And by the way, all of these meetings are Zoomed. If they continued the Zoom meetings even after COVID, previously you had to go to the county building in Taos, which is in the city of Taos, for these meetings. But because of COVID, they moved to Zoom and since they have not moved off of Zoom. So did you make the motion for?
Yes, I'll make a second motion for.
And I'll second it. Any other discussion? Madam third.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Muir.
Yes. Appointment of the Rattone Extraterritorial zoning board members. And I believe there's two from the county. Is that correct? And to be honest with you, it doesn't make sense, since it's not my district, for me to be a part of that zoning. And since you both represent Rattone to some extent, I almost make it think it makes sense for each of you to be on that committee. Actually, it's a board, I think, right? Because you do the appointment of the committee. It's your personal. So we do need to go through the formality of nominations. But I just think it makes sense for you two to be on that. So I'll open the floor to nominations.
I nominate Commissioner Kern.
And I'll second that. Any other discussion?
I would also nominate Commissioner, unless you wanted to.
Eh, we don't have, we can do them together.
Yeah. I would ask for an amendment to Commissioner Trujillo's appointment to also complete the settlement.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Trujillo, Commissioner Kern to the extraterritorial zone. Any further discussion? Madam third.
Commissioner Kern? Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Muir.
Yes. Did we, did we have to vote on the amendment before we voted on the?
We should have. We should have just ended up just appointing him as the first person.
Are we going to get in trouble with that?
I do have a rule.
I did, yeah. After we did that, I thought we should have voted on the amendment. Sorry. All right, next, I have a twenty-one discussion request, statement and receipts and expenses from Colfax County Treasurer. Any discussion, Mr. Manager? Some of them. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So I would like to say this, in conjunction with this request, this is an annual request we have with the treasurer. Mr. Manager, I would request that we also present the cash holdings that the county has that are not investments, are actual cash holdings that we have carried over or currently in current budget that are available for expenditure outside of the investments and kind of something rough description on the intent of the use of those or where they fit into the budget, whatever. And in addition, what I'd like to do is ask Madam Treasurer if she could look at the money that she has invested currently and kind of go through and earmark or itemize the dollars that she has invested and put descriptions of earmarks for usage requirements related to those funds. So like we have the Miners Colfax Medical Centers, it's probably eight hundred thousand now, right? A little over, approximately, whatever it is. And that is earmarked. I mean, it has a very specific use. We can't use it for just anything. And I know we have other monies in our investments that are also earmarked. It can only be used for very specific expenditures. And I would just like those things listed and itemized for the commission to understand. I think it's important because you just see the numbers out there. And if you don't know kind of the history behind them, I would say, or their intended use, it does seem like that we have more money than we do. So I would just request that as part of the report.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I almost called you chairman.
Mr. Fernandez.
I just wanted to bring up something that now that it's on the agenda, commissioners. I was reading the agreement between Miners Colfax Medical Center and Colfax County. It clearly says in there, and I was hoping that we'd try and repeat it. It clearly says in there that the commission should make a report, ask for a report from the bank of where that money is located at. And I'm talking specifically about the Miners Trust Fund. So there's two different funds. We have one, as you said earlier, that's new rate, eight hundred thousand dollars. Because we took some of that money out. I thought it was around one point three or one point one million. And then we gave the different really just four and forty thousand dollars apiece to help with the EMTs. But in reading that agreement, it clearly says, and I hadn't read it until fully until I heard it last week that it's for the population. And it clearly says in there that it is mandated that this commission asks for records from the bank where that money sits. And no one's ever done that. So we need to know, because they have to give you a specific amount and how much is invested, what the percentage is, and how they're investing that money. Right now, it's at one of the lowest. I couldn't even tell me that's what I talked to the head of them. But they think last week it was only like one point one percent. That is very, very horrible for a CD. The CDs, to my knowledge, right now are one point four percent. And for it to be at one percent, I'm shocked that that hasn't been changed. So but your point here, reading this up on this agenda today, is I would like to see this commission or the chairman along with the resident commission sign their letter, asking the bank where that CD sits for a report, because it clearly says in that, in that, that a report will be given once a year back to the commission and ask, I sat on this commission for eight years and I never seen anything. I didn't even know that we were supposed to ask for a report. But I think, you know, it's part of the county's money. We need to find out exactly why it has been invested the way it is at one percent and find a report for the bank. Because I asked, maybe I asked, did you go to the, what is going on with the other monies that MCMC actually has there now? I'd like to know whether or not they actually spent that money or they're stealing a CD. So there's two different, there's two different accounts there. So again, I'm asking this commission to please write a letter to the bank and get a report on that CD.
I did ask the bank way back a few years ago when, because it kept getting bottom CDs for two point seven. And then Lonnie wanted the million. But I couldn't get the bank to give me any information on the million.
Well, let me say this. It doesn't say in the agreement that the treasurer has to ask for that report. It clearly says that the commission, the county commission, once they, once you all ask for a report, it is clear that it's mandated. It says they shall give this commission a report every year. So, you know, but many of time, as the treasurer is trying to get a report on either one of those, I think this community wants the bank to have to give a report. So I would ask this commission to write a letter to the bank to get a, I think it should be done yearly to see exactly how that's being invested and to see whether or not that other, that other monies are still there. And I don't know to this day whether or not they spent that money. And again, I'd like to know where they spent it. Because those, those monies you put under a trust for a certain purpose, and that is for healthcare or health reasons. There's some broad language in there. Maybe I should say there's some ambiguous language in there that I'm looking into whether or not legally, how that is interpreted. So I hope we got that correctly, along with the commission, along with you, Commissioner Muir, Chairman Muir, that it was okay for us to give that forty thousand dollars to each building. We're okay. We were okay on that legally. And to my knowledge, I think there's only been one, directly from a local county manager that has sent a letter back explaining how that money has been used. Because they need to get on the ball to commit this commission, oh, forty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And it's been done for the purpose of helping the EMTs get trained and Angel Fire, etc. Because they were lacking EMTs, as you brought up, Chairman Muir, many, many months ago. And I was the one that brought up, well, there's money in the trust fund. Let's use that money. It's been sitting there for many, many years. So, but again, getting back to my point, the agreement clearly says that this commission should write a letter yearly. And they have to respond. It says they shall respond with a full report from the bank of how that money is being invested. I think this commission needs to check this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. So, Madam third, should we, I'm in favor of what Mr. Fernandez requested. Do we have to include that as a friendly amendment since we already have a motion?
If she needs to, they'd be able to amend their, their motion, just amend the motion.
Can we amend the motion to include that?
I'm going to get something better.
Do we have to, do you have enough language to, I think we all understand what he's asking for. I don't know if we need to develop language, or do you have that?
Well, just, I've got enough information here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I was trying to remember the name of the agreement. It's called the ESTRO agreement. So under the ESTRO agreement, ESTRO agreement is when stated that the bank shall give the commission a full report if the commission requests that, which I think is sure. So it's under the ESTRO agreement. Get a copy of the ESTRO agreement. It's in there.
So we have a, we have a motion and a second and a friendly amendment, which means that the person who made the original motion accepts the amendment. Do we still have to vote on the amendment?
I accept.
Okay.
Just vote two.
Okay. So we need to vote on the amendment now? Or just, since it's a friendly, we don't have to vote?
We do not. So we'll just vote on it.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion with the friendly amendment to request statement of receipts and expenses from Colfax County Treasurer, which will include a breakdown, Madam Treasurer, I'm sorry. Can you come up here and speak, please, just so, because we are videotaping this and I think it's easier for the audience.
So on the statement of this expenditures and wanting to have money, most of those money is coming in from taxes that I, so what you're wanting, besides what I gave you, will cut off compliance. Because they're wanting their money. We do receive it, but they keep track of that.
So I guess, Madam Treasurer, since the report does come from the treasurer's office, what I would ask is that you work with the finance department and help them to identify. But I think the commission does need to understand, we have fifteen million, whatever it is, in investments being held by the treasurer's office. Are any of those funds earmarked for specific expenditures? So, so we, I just want that documented and I'd like you to go through it. And you can even look at it and say, here, legally, we have to spend it on this. Or ideally, this is the intent of this money. It's, this is really to try and educate the commission on the cash balance that we have, especially with the new commission. I'm sure Manager, I'm sorry, I almost called you Manager. I'm sure Commissioner Kern probably knows this, probably better than I do. But I think for the commission, I think it's a good thing for us to understand. So I would like to ask for you to work together and to have that undocumented, in documentation of this report. Yes, Chairman?
Just a good question. So I understand, are you speaking only in general funds or each fund individually? So the way our treasurer's report reads, like our archive fund or our LUPF funds, our road department funds, those are all separated and not repeated for whatever fund that that is for. However, anything that's in general fund is only general. So I guess that was, I just want some clarification.
So what I would say is, from the monies that the treasurer generally shows on her report as investments, I would like those identified and if they belong to separate funds, for those funds to be identified. And then if, within those funds, if the money has to be spent on something specific, not just a general fund, but anybody.
Okay, so you're just looking at the investment portion?
Right.
Okay.
Seth, I agree.
Yep. I mean, most of my monies does come in, we do, when the Joe's centers down, monies that come in, we do receive it. And possibly we have all that money in general fund. It does get, we do invest. I don't invest. I always have to leave so much in for payroll and handles. I'm trying to get more with the banks now because I'm not getting the customer service that I used to get. But I'm trying to invest any extra monthly. Like now I have another big distribution, so I'm trying to do a monthly thirty-two days so we can, you know, make fifteen, eighteen thousand on that money.
Okay. I just would like it documented, so, and then we can have further discussions at the mission meeting, which is to present.
Yes, it all goes, it all gets deposited and then it gets into the general fund and the excess. I will, I invest for, you know, thirty-two days. I tried to take it about six months and a month to a year. But it's kind of hard, you know, to post and.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, a friendly amendment, and a second. So I think we're at the voting stage. Madam third.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Muir.
Yes.
Commissioner, I would ask, can I have a manager that would be possible to scan and say, well, we're interested in the ESTRO agreement? Does this allow her?
Did you hear that, Manager? Well, I did. She was requesting a copy of the ESTRO agreement that Mr. Fernandez spoke of. He sent to the county commissioners.
I'd make that happen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Item twenty-two, change order form for fire station, fuel stations, rebid RFB twenty-two dash fill free, max three.
I think part of this Colfax County Fire Department, your warning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. So to give you a little bit of background, our fire department put out a bid for some fuel stations for four different sites. We anticipated that these sites would come in very pricing and we wouldn't be able to afford all four of them. So we kind of power tied them in order. Initially, we thought Abbott would be the primary one for the first site, the main station for the second. Feeling confident that we would. Feeling confident that we would be able to build more than just one, but when the prices came in, we were unable to do that, and we were unable to purchase another fuel site. And consultation with the chief, we feel it would be best to put the first site at the main station. So the paperwork for it was just to move from the Abbott station to the main station. There's no money difference in the proposed goal for each site, so it's not cost us anything. We're just moving the primary location from Abbott to open for any questions.
So, Fire Marshal Fernandez, have you ran this by the procurement? I know, I don't know, only the chair is in charge of the counter.
Yes, so what's happened is, is Mike Bowen, our architect, is working directly with Danielle. Danielle actually is working with him and produces this document before he got it. I personally haven't seen it. I'm going to speak to this to why this is happening, so if you guys have more information than I do.
Okay, understood. Any other questions, commissioners?
Questions, are we, are we drilling a well? What are we doing as far as the fuel station?
Fire Marshal, we live this long. Sure, so actually, at our main station, we already have a well and we're able to actually fill those tanks with that well as far as moving to that station. Whereas at Abbott, we would have to put in a well and consist in there. So we feel putting it at the main station saves us some money, you know, too much. The plan is to put in the more of those two, you know, these additional sites just right now. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order form for the 2022-03 Maxville.
I, I make the motion with a...
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Thanks, thank you. Item 23, action, discussion action on memorandum of understanding between domestic violence and B Hill, Mondo, Detention Center. Madam Warden?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Congratulations, and welcome to the commission. So we have, have to have a third party for reporting, Prey. Prey is a person named Lieutenant. We have had this done already before, it just needed approved. And then on the first page, I'm just adding that they are also going to be used for having an advocate. And the third party we're recording is again, I mean, if you're in jail, and that should be somebody outside for reporting in case something does happen.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, to approve the memorandum of understanding between domestic violence and B Hill.
Just one quick comment, I have some questions. I've got a result of County Manager Lawrence, we are good, they cleared up some stuff for me, and I, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Warden's lady.
Thank you, sir.
Item 24, discussion action on the Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Grant Agreement Project number AXX-23-02.
For your commissioners, County Manager Cora, Madam Clerk. So this is transportation grant, it's a means of that for Angel Fire Airport. It's in the amount of $22,222. There is a 10% match, and that sponsored match is $2,222. And the state funding is for $20,000. I'll stand 20 questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
What kind of consumables has been used, roughly, would you say?
Um, this, the scope of work on this grant is anything that has to do with maintaining the airport. So in this grant's scope of work, you can do anything from filters for the field farm all the way to light bulbs for the actual facility. So it's just anything that has to do with it, is, is in the level of those, that is true.
Thank you.
Item, Commissioner, any questions?
No.
I have no questions, so I will entertain a motion. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Grant Agreement Project number AXX-23-02. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Thank you, Joan. All right, so we have the commissioners' document. I'm not sure if this was covered in your orientation, Commissioner Trejo, but this is your chance to talk about what you're doing in the community. Any items that you want to bring before the commission for future meetings? Or just basically any comments that you want to make to your constituents as a member of the commission?
Thank you. I do have a statement, so, you know, I look forward to serving this county. I love, I'm going to keep to my promises of transparency and always having the best, best, people's best interest at heart and in mind. I work to bridge all gaps in the, in the county and the communities. To my fellow elected officials, I believe in leadership from ourselves and respect from others. You'll always have my respect, even at bad times you do not agree. I will always hold your office in the highest regards. And I know we are a team and I'll do my best to help you succeed and help our constituents. In the last few months, I've been working diligently to be brought up to speed on county issues. I know Commissioner Weir and Kern are more seasoned in county business and I do not want to skip a beat on my account. In doing so, I've worked closely with County Manager Cora. And I want everyone to know that it has my whole confidence and support. I thank all the county employees for everything you, everything you do. Please know that your hard work is seen and appreciated by both our constituents and myself. I will work, or I will always act, I will ask for your help in the coming years to assist me as a commissioner to learn and help implement change as the commission sees for the betterment of all. I will encourage you to always think of our constituents and provide the best customer service. For example, in business, I've always thought of it as how would I want someone to help and treat my grandmother? While in the process of serving our constituents, if you find or have an idea on how to improve something, I encourage you to bring it forward. In the coming months, I look forward to working with our fellow commissioners and I look to the officials to address some of the following issues. Review our liabilities and make sure they're properly funded. Assist with our county funds to take into consideration the time value of money, whether this be where our money is invested or funds should be spent on one-time projects to make life simpler or more efficient. For one example, I thought it'd be nice to go digital with all of our county records. This is something I'd like to explore with the county. Look into the possibilities of hiring full-time grant writers for the county. And by the next legislative session, next year's legislative session, perhaps a lobbyist, to better represent our county, push for state, for state funding. Work with all offices to see where we could encourage a rate workforce housing. This is an issue that has gone on far too long and is desperately needed. And as I close on my remarks, I believe in being detailed oriented and analytical, will take into consideration a lot of objectives and prior commissions that have been drawn forward. I believe in being positive and fair with those whose happiness depends upon me. You will always see me happy quarterly before I know my actions not only reflect on me and my family, but also on Colfax County as a whole. That's, that's all, thank you, Commissioner, for, Commissioner Weir.
Thank you, Commissioner Trejo. Madam Commissioner?
The only thing that I have is, and we've already touched on it, we've received a lot of calls about the trash situation in Maxwell. Thank you, Virginia, for, for all your efforts, and the manager for on that as well. I know it's a, it's a beast, and trash always is. It's not a trash problem, it's a people problem, and that's what we run into here as well. It's a problem, so I think we'll hopefully get there with that and then what. But the mayor brought up as well, I think it's really important to be, be focused on that and try to, try to get all of our workforce to serve in Colfax County. To make it easier for them, better for all, all of them, and that part of it. I thank you and I look forward to moving forward and doing the things for Colfax County.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. So, next, item 26, oh, I guess, never mind, I'm going to do...
No, important.
First of all, I, I just want to, I want to thank my fellow commissioners for trusting me and, and me and the chairman of this commission. I will tell you that I am still only one vote. And even though, you know, I get the responsibility of leading the meetings that we have, this is really a commission-driven activity and the three of us will need to work together. The one thing that as chairman that I will require is respect. Not just respect for each other, even when we disagree, and we will disagree. As a matter of fact, I need a timeout, I just... I never disagreed with you, Roy. It's 112 guys. Anyhow, even when we disagree, so we have to remember we're not individuals, but we are elected officials and it's the position that we have that demands and requires us of respect. And I try very hard to always show respect to people, even when I disagree with them. And if I'm ever out of line, by golly, you should tell me, make sure I know about it. Because I am a human and I'm imperfect, so there may be times when my frustrations or anger is get the best of me. But respect is the key, and as long as we respect each other and treat each other with respect, this commission is going to do great things. Like I said earlier, my intent is to push hard, Mr. Manager. You know, we expect a lot out of you. So far, you've lived up to your expectations and we'll expect you to continue that and maybe even expand on it some. But there's a lot of things we want to do, accomplish in the coming years, and I think this is the commission to accomplish those goals, I really do. This wasn't my motto, but it's kind of become my motto. It's actually Monty's, our, our manager for's, is sometimes you've got to do the hard right. And he's not talking about directions left or right. He's talking about doing the right thing even when it's hard. And maybe you don't want it. We have to focus on doing the hard right as a commission. And I think as long as we do that, even though sometimes the newspapers aren't going to like us, sometimes the constituents aren't going to like us. But you, as long as we have solace and the knowledge that we're doing what we believe is right and truthful, I think that we can do great things with this commission. I do have some priorities that I would like to address in this coming year. I'll go ahead and let you know about them now. I think my number one priority is something we actually started to address last year, maybe even 18 months ago. And that is finding, is paying our employees an appropriate wage. I'll tell you, I don't know what that wage is. I know that in many cases, what we're paying is not enough. And I also realize the financial constraints on the county that we have. We can't just pay you whatever we'd like to. Believe me, I'd like to pay you all more. But that is priority number one. And listen, it's for selfish reasons. It's because if we're not paying you, and I know, I mean, I was, ran businesses for 30 years before I moved to Angel Fire. And my greatest asset was always my staff, always my employees, and I knew that. And I, I saw firsthand, when you, when you don't pay your staff properly, then you don't get the most out of them. And they're not happy, and you have all kinds of side issues that stem from that. And so in many cases, pay is the basis of an employee employer relationship. You can't expect people to be altruistic with their jobs. It's just not the nature of it, you've got to compensate them appropriately. And in today's world, it's even more magnified because of the competition for staff is so great. So to me, that is the number one thing that I want to focus on. You know, the way our cycle works, it's going to have to be next year's budget, which Joan and I guess we'll start working on in March some, at some point. And for my fellow commissioners, that's something we need to seriously consider. We have a lot of funds available. I know there's challenges with reoccurring expenses versus one-time expenses. We're going to have to address all that, but the number one issue is, and I don't want to overpay anybody, I'll be honest. But I want to make sure you're paid appropriately and competitively. And that, first of all, when you walk into the office, you're not thinking about how, you know, your pay being fair enough, you're thinking about what are the jobs I have to do for the county today? So that's my number one issue. I will tell you my number two issue, and this was maybe not even on my list until this past year, but my number two issue is fire prevention. I think that we have a wake-up call that happened last April and May. And if some of you don't understand what I'm talking about, I'll put together a trip and we'll go drive through Moravale and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. That place is devastated. And I know you hear about it on the news, but it's not, the news doesn't do it justice. Go drive through it, go meet with the people. We do not want that in Colfax County. And the only way that we're going to prevent it, where we can't prevent fire altogether. Fire's going to happen, it's a matter of when. But what we can do is prepare our forests and our, our structures to be ready for when that fire does occur. And so because of that, if, if we had a healthy forest in our county and everything we were, you know, I guess fire-wise is the term, I wouldn't be as concerned. But I can tell you we're not, our forests are in terrible shape. And again, all you got to do is go tour them, which I have. And so that's my number two issue, is fire prevention. Number three is EMS and healthcare. I thank my fellow, my prior commissioners in supporting me and trying to financially support EMS services throughout the county. I think that was the first step and I think the county can do more. At a minimum, we can do the same. When it comes to budgeting, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners for that same money that the prior commission approved to go to EMS services. And if our mayor was still here, he would attest to you that EMS services are the one thing that's truly suffering, and it has direct impact on our constituents. I mean, there's nothing worse than you imagine having cardiac arrest or whatever it is and having to wait an hour for an ambulance to get there. So I think there's a part that the county can play because all of our EMS services are provided by municipalities. The county doesn't have any EMS service, yet we expect our constituents that are in unincorporated areas to get service the same as they would in a municipality. And because of that, I believe that the county has an obligation to help in that area. Workforce housing is the next item. I agree with Commissioner Trejo. We have made some progress, I know the city of Raton's made some progress, and that there is initiative through More Central Economic Development where they obtained grant money to go buy unoccupied homes, fix them up, get them ready, put them back on the market, and sell them. It's just one step, and it's not a quick fix. But it is a step that can help significantly because virtually everywhere except Angel Fire, all the other municipalities, and I know, because I went on tour with More Central and the consultants they hired of all the municipalities, unfortunately, I wasn't able to go on the Raton one, but I got reports on that. But all the other municipalities, they have houses, I mean, dozens of houses that are unoccupied right now and in the middle of a housing crisis. And so, I'm actually going to come before the commission at some point and ask the county to pitch in and help in an initiative to rehabilitate unoccupied houses in Colfax County. The next thing that I have is what I'm going to call a special projects coordinator. A special projects coordinator would be potentially a grant writer. I don't want to call him a grant writer because I don't want to limit it to grant writing what this person does. But I think there's a lot of special projects that the county takes on and our staff is already overburdened with their day-to-day jobs. And because they're overburdened with this, we ask them to take on more and then things don't get done. I've seen it, I don't blame anybody for it, I'm just saying that's the reality we're in today. And I think we need some sort of special projects, which would include grant writing and overseeing and some interaction with the, some of my other priorities as well. But, and again, this is what I'm calling it now, I'm open to ideas and conversation. I haven't formulated a hard vision of what this person's role would be, but what I have seen is things not get done and it's nobody's fault because everybody has enough work to do. So, that is something that I'll be pushing for. And then finally, primary, so, I will tell you that I don't have a strong belief that an animal shelter is really needed in Colfax County. But I do know, regardless of that, I do know that it's a statutory requirement for us to have services for animal control. It's in the state statute, we've never had it here. We're in violation of the state statute. And because of that and the fact that I'm a rules follower, it is a priority for me for us to develop some sort of services related to animals that are running wild. And I think the Springer last year volunteered to donate a building for that. I thought that was a good first step. I know this is expensive, it's not going to be cheap to get this operating. But we have to come up with a solution. I prefer that solution to be, to bring everybody in the county together and try and come up with a resolution to this because, you know, some municipalities feel like they're handling their situation fine. I've had residents in Angel Fire tell me that, you know, that's why people move here, so they can let their dogs run free. So, you know, I, again, I have mixed emotions about doing this. You know, what is the need, are we spending money, or we don't need to spend money? But at the same time, it doesn't really matter because we're not in compliance with state legislation. So, because of that, I feel that the animal shelter must be something that we address in the coming year. And hopefully, we put $100,000 in the budget last year. I don't know whether we want to own the building, whether we want to do a lease on the building, I don't care, but we need to get the building up, that was our goal for this year. So, we have until the end of June, we've got to get the building ready. And then the commission last year said, let's get the building this year. Next year, we'll start talking about operating it. And so, I fully intend to ask this commission to have those conversations about how do we get an animal shelter operating? How do we interact with sheriff's department with that facility? How do we interact with the municipalities? It's not just, oh, we bought a truck, let's go cats and dogs and cats. There's going to be a lot of work put into it, so that is on my list of priorities for accomplishments in the coming year. And finally, one of the things I want to do is we have quite a bit of money from ARPA still. And we have until 2025, Jonah, 2025 to spend this money or we have to give it back. Now, I don't know if many of you know me, but I'm a fiscal conservative. I'm not a big fan of the government handing out money. But what doesn't make sense to me is when you lose that battle, you can fight against the government handing out money. And when you lose that battle, because you lost, to not take the money and fully utilize it just doesn't make sense. Because if we give it back to the government, they're going to give it to somebody else. I don't think we're serving our constituents right, whether we politically agree that we should have got the money or not. Now that we have it, let's do good things for our constituents with it. So, what I'm going to recommend is that we have a special town hall meeting, maybe a couple of them, where we discuss with the public the potential uses of our ARPA funds because it's, now that we got that last check, Jonah, it's close to $2 million, right? Yeah. And we have one more check coming next year, right, about $250? Oh, we don't, I thought we had one more. Well, it's not, it's the branch of ARPA.
Yeah, L A T E.
Yeah.
L A T E F or L A T C F, whatever that is.
So, anyhow, and I want public input on how this money, now, there's constraints on this money. It can't just be spent on anything. There are some pretty rigid rules on how this money can be spent. So, number one, we need to educate the public on what those rules are. And we can't rely on the public to read that 365-page document that has all the rules in it or however big it is. It was crazy, I don't, I'll be honest, I didn't make it all the way through. But we need to understand those rules and we need to have a plan on expending that money. I don't want to just wait until we need it and then expend it. It needs to be, we need to plan out how we're going to spend that money over the next two years, two-plus years. So, that's what I have on my agenda. Again, I'm open and I'm sure there'll be things come up that I haven't considered right now, emergency situations like solid waste and that we're going to need to address. But to start the year off, those are the things that I would like to move forward with. And I know it's a big agenda, it's a lot considering we're basically staffed just to keep the doors open. But this is what I'm going to be pushing for this commission and for the county employees to work through in service of our constituents. With that said, I say thank you and I look forward to serving. Mr. Manager.
I'm going to be busy, sir.
Yes, you are.
First of all, I'd just like to welcome both the new commissioners. And I will also kind of bounce off what Chairman Weir said. There will be respect, we will work with you in a positive way. And we will try to work as hard and as diligently as we can to accomplish all the goals and objectives that we need to accomplish. I appreciate what Commissioner Trejo said and Commissioner Weir said about customer service. And I'm going to be getting into that a little bit later. But I'm just very proud of several members of my staff who, I think during this crisis, during other issues, have had extremely good customer service and have really been professional with our citizens. To begin with, we had a meeting with Department Hads and elected for our departments on Monday. And this was in reference to try to get information, kind of get what, I don't know, kind of what this, what we need for capital improvement, as was directed by Commissioner Weir to do. And that meeting probably was one of the most positive meetings I think we've ever had as a county. I've got to give Glenn Stevens some credit for a newcomer to that. His list of stuff almost reliable next. So, we had an incredible amount of input put in. We are thinking as a county, as a group working together and will be presenting some of the ideas to the commission later. But out of that, out of that meeting, it was, like I said, out of the box thinking. I think we're going to be looking at issues on building security and expanding. The amount of information and data that was brought forward by Department Hads and other officials was just truly amazing. And I think it was, once again, the best meetings we've ever had. It was positive and there, the county, there's a lot of needs that I think have maybe been put on the back burner for a while, but all that came forward and we'll be working on that through the 12th. I know John and I are going to be staying some time aside to actually work on the portal and get this information down all the way to the state of New Mexico. So, we still have a lot of work to do. Some of the things that came out of the meeting is, I know we've talked, talked with Armandeao about developing our webpage, making it a better webpage and even looking, kind of what the sheriffs got on the social media so that we can, once again, get information out in an efficient way. And to people, it seems like social media with our, especially with most people, you know, that's what they primarily utilize. So, we're working forward on that. One of the challenges we have within this gallery is acoustics and our speaker system. And Armandeao, he's going to go ahead and move forward immediately. He's going to work with Fred Martinez, our maintenance director. And we're going to be looking at new speakers. And he's going to be contacting a gentleman in town that kind of comes in, analyzes acoustics and will probably be putting something along the wall. But the acoustics present in the gallery are very hard to hear. Some of the other complaints that IT gets is when we're trying to do the recordings. We end up getting a lot of people coming in and are reporting back saying, I couldn't hear what was going on at the meeting. I could see everybody, but I just couldn't hear, I couldn't understand what was going on. So, I think we need to correct that. Right now, along with procurement, I know Chairman Weir mentioned that. We are looking at trying to add to our procurement. That position has been held by Danielle. We're looking, we have some very eager, ambitious staff and managers on us and we're looking at adding two more procurement officers. And one of those is going to be Virginia and the other one's going to be Tabitha. And I think, like right now, Danielle's on a Trinity leave and right now, we need to be able to continue to do county business. And I think getting more procurement officers is exactly the right thing that we need to do. Commissioner Trejo asked me to comment a bit on the airport. We're still working on the airport. I think we've actually got one of the most positive advisory committees that we've had in recent years. We've identified a lot of issues with the airport, a lot of things that need to be corrected and fixed. And we're moving in that direction. I know with the advisory committee, we are all in favor. The advisory committee is in favor. The PAS commission, and I'm sure probably most likely this commission, will be in favor of looking at trying to get somebody else to manage that airport in a professional way. The county has been doing it for 40 years and we've had some managers that are better, some managers that are maybe worse, but we're not really to the point of managing a real fast airport yet. I think if we can continue to work in the direction that we are, we will actually get there. And I know right now, we're working with the advisory committee on looking at hangers and developing the airport. And everybody so far that I've talked to has been on board with that. The last meeting I went to, I ended up taking John and it was an absolute delight because there were so many questions about finances and grants and how it works. And we were able to have, I think, probably the most productive meetings that we ever had with the airport advisory board. Commissioner Chairman Weir, I like your, what you've laid out. Especially your number one priority was coming up with recognizing and paying employees. The number one challenge for employers and especially law enforcement corrections in this nation is hiring and retention. And that has become very, very, very competitive. A lot of bigger departments and the bigger cities and state agencies trying to recruit people away from you. So, I think, once again, exactly what you said, if we can get fair, get our employees fair payment. And once again, along with fair payment, there needs to be respect with our employees. And the number one reason that people leave a position is they don't feel appreciated or they don't feel that their manager or supervisors treat them well. So, we'll continue to work on those. Once again, I think fire prevention, EMS, workforce housing, special projects. I really like, I know Commissioner Trejo had to talk to me about this. There is a lot of money within the state of New Mexico, there's a lot of money within the federal government right now for grants and for special projects. The, some of the challenges are, we don't have the people to go work on that because we're busy carrying out the business, in this case, in the county or in the city of the state. I want to thank you for inviting me to the meeting in Cimarron with our new representative. I think that was highly enlightening to me, how business really works in the state of New Mexico. And even to get the insight of, you know, a lobbyist, maybe working with a lobbyist to help us get some of this money. I think, I think those are some good ideas as well. But we'll continue to work forward, once again, in a positive way as we take on challenges of the future and make things happen. With that said, I would like to call Armandeao up, Warden Slade, Jonah and Virginia. You guys can just come up a bit. This is where I'm in agreement with the commission on customer service and professionalism. I want to thank these four individuals. Our IT director, I have not ever received one complaint from him from any department, any office within Colfax County. He has taken on an incredible job. Tim, he was training Tim in that position. And I couldn't be prouder of our IT department, the management of that department. And as I had expressed to the commission, we have had some issues with hacking and he was right on it, some is right on it. And they are doing an exceptional job. Warden Slade, as the commission will remember, we had a tour of the jail and she talked about some of the improvements that she just made at the jail. And one of my mandates to her is we are going to get credit. And she has taken that directive and she just made it her own. And in any meeting, we heard this on Monday, I heard at Saddle Pines, we're going to get that jail credited. I am proud of her. At the, when we did our tour at the jail, Warden Slade said, you know, I think we've made about $500,000 in revenues and I think we're going to be looking at probably $900,000 by the end of this episode. When we started those, and that's through housing contracted inmates with our neighbors. And that sounded a little high because when we had originally started that, I think I advised the PAS commission to be about $300,000. And once again, the revenues from that go, went to give the detention officers a 15% raise and the sheriff's office a 15% raise, which both those departments were in crisis as far as personnel. So, I got some latest information.
So I've got some latest information. To date, Warden Slade has brought in $568,231.76 in revenue. If we project that out to the end of the year, I think it's going to be close to $900,000. So once again, this is something that is, we were able to work on, and she has taken, once again, that assignment, made it her own, and is furthering it. So I think that is just incredible. As far as, we've made some significant progress with medical. Right now, currently, our medical, our pharmaceutical costs have been $18,203. And our medical bill with us doing our own medical department is $76,164. So once again, we've seen just an incredible savings, going with our own medical department, and I couldn't be happier for the progress that Warden Slade has made. I left recently on vacation, and we had a lot of work to do, and I left Jonah in charge as the acting accounting manager. She exceeded my expectations. She kept me in the loop on a lot of things that were going on, and the amount of work that she produced and has been producing is amazing. I mean, she is so much more than just a financial specialist. When we hired personnel to come into the manager's office, she has been here so long that she was able to have a clear understanding of what those jobs were, and she did a lot of training. So once again, she has trained up our new staff. They're very competent, they're eager, they're energized, and they're working in a positive way. And Commissioner Weir, I'm going to, once again, bounce off your comment earlier about Virginia. We have had a trash crisis, and water climbs in those crises, that's where we have our people, they either sink, or they rise to the occasion. And in my opinion, she has rose to the occasion. She has taken on an amazing amount of work. She is making progress in E-911. She has organized the solid waste department. She has organized and now created record books and KIB. She is pinpointing every dumpster and knows its location and mapping within Colfax County. And once again, Commissioner Trejo, her customer service is above and beyond my expectations. I have had upset people call, as you guys have as well. Her management and customer service and dealing with those individuals, and the fair treatment of those individuals is just outstanding, and I could not be happier. So I wish you would join me now, and congratulate these four individuals. Jonah? Thank you very much for the call.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the call. Thank you for surviving the storm, and I endure. Chairman Weir, question?
Thank you, Manager Gore, and to the recipients of the packs, all I can say is I wish it was an envelope. This is the government, and that's illegal.
With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam clerk?
Mr. clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo? Chairman Weir?
Yes. We are adjourned.
That was a lot. I was thinking she was trying to...
A term of peace, not fight, it's a decision.